Our meetings are all. And we start with the Pledge of Allegiance. Morning, everybody. Um, let's keep in note, this meeting is being recorded. We always start with introductions. So, Jesse, let's start with you and go around the outside of the room. You can tell us whenever you can announce yourselves and then we'll start down there with our IT folks.
Okay, Jesse Schreiber, I am the Dutch Manufacturing Coordinator at Saint Mary's High School.
Hello, Kate Brock, Executive Director of the Community Education Center of Elk County, Cameron County.
I'm Angie Catalone, I'm the High School Principal at St. Mary's Center.
Hi, Catalone, and I'm here for the Cameron Elk Suicide Prevention Task Force.
Jack Heebler, Dutch Manufacturing Student.
Vinnie Shafeski, Dutch Manufacturing Student.
I was a Furly, Dutch Manufacturing Student.
Caleb Fox, Dutch Manufacturing Student.
I'm John Slimmon, the artist who is collaborating with the Dutch Manufacturing Student.
I'm Academy, I'm an intern with Dickinson Center.
I'm Sierra Heims, I am the Program Director of Children's Prevention Services at Dickinson Center.
I'm Rhonda Penfield, Dutch Manufacturing Student.
Maya Washburn, Dutch Manufacturing Student.
Traylon Ginther, Dutch Manufacturing Student.
Thank you.
Steven Sunderson, IT Tech.
Calvin Moore, IT Director.
Marilyn Seiko, The Courier-Express, The Daily Press.
Matthew Frye, Elk County Treasurer.
Rick Brown, Elk County Solicitor.
Greg Bauer, Elk County Commissioner.
Fritz Leger, Elk County Commissioner.
Morning, Matt Creasenberg, Elk County Commissioner.
Madigan McGrath, Ridgeway High School Senior.
Ash Grab, Elk County Chief Court.
Emily Anderson, Office Administrator.
Callidron, Carol Quirrell, Elk County.
Thank you, and just want to introduce or one addition to our introductions. Commissioner Creasenberg has a student from Ridgeway High School job shadowing today. Yeah, there would be like to say anything?
Um, well, clearly she's shown good judgment selecting me as. We have that. But, uh, no, we welcome our opportunities to have students that are interested. And I'll let Madigan talk a little bit about who she is and what she does. But certainly encourage the opportunity for young people to get a little bit of a better insight into what local government is is all about. And so we welcome her this morning. If you just want to give us a little quick introduction on who you are and your view for the future?
Sure, um, I'm Madigan McGrath. In August, I'll be going to Dickinson College outside of Harrisburg for Law and Policy. I'm here because I'm interested in the way the policy affects everyone's state of day lives. And I think that being involved in the local government is a big part of that because this affects you guys and all the other citizens of Elk County a lot. So I'm honored to be here. I've taken the opportunities, um, that I can to see the way Elk County functions while I still live here. So I'm honored to be here. Thank you, guys.
And we just learned a fun fact, Madigan. I introduced her to the Elections Office and you actually undertook your own, under your own volition, a voter registration drive over to Ridgeway High School.
I did.
And, uh, I don't know, how many new voters did you scoop up?
Um, I think I was there for two days in the cafeteria during lunch and I got like twenty-five or thirty kids to register to vote because they just didn't know how to and didn't know how to and didn't know where to start. So I was honored to be a part of that and now it's an annual thing, so.
We've got this sort of our good news students, uh, opportunity where we can see that we have young people who are out doing good things. Sometimes you hear some of the bad news that drowns out some of the good news. So it's great to have our other young folks here from Dutch Manufacturing and also Madigan to give us some hope for the future.
So that, that's really cool, Madigan. Um, so here at the county, our Elections Office holds a mock election at Saint Mary's High School every year. I don't know if Kim touched on that when he met with her.
Yeah, we talked about that. I really like that program. I would like for it to be a thing everywhere.
Yeah, yeah, we, we could use any help we could get. Get them into the other schools because it is great. So thanks for your initiative.
Thank you.
So we, uh, we'll go through our business items as quickly as we can. Um, first on the agenda is approval of the agenda. Gentlemen, you have an agenda in front of you. Any changes, edits? Hearing that, we look for motion to approve the agenda as presented.
So moved.
We have motion in second, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye, aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. Also in front of us, we have the minutes of the April seventeen, twenty twenty-five Elk County Commissioners Meeting. Um, after reviewing them, any comments, questions, edits?
Make a motion, we approve the minutes as prepared. Second.
Thank you, Commissioners. We have a motion in second. All those in favor approving the minutes, April seventeen, twenty twenty-five Commissioners Meeting signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, thank you. We have no resolutions, no new bit, no old business. Under new business, new business number one, we have a request from our Maintenance Office for ratification of a new contract with Allied Systems Incorporated for the replacement of an HVAC cooling tower at the Annex Building, which is this building, in the amount of forty-four thousand, seven hundred and seventy-two dollars and eighty cents. The cost includes all equipment, plumbing, electrical, uh, crane rental and installation. So, Mr. Chief Clerk, anything, any explanation on this?
Uh, replacement of equipment, uh, it's a, the amount's forty-four, seven, seven, two, eighty. Uh, and it's a ratification because it's necessary. It's, it's the air handling equipment that handles all the air for this, uh, heating and cooling. So heating's come for, uh, you know, the cooling season's coming up. So, uh, if we didn't get a jump on it, we'd be behind the eight ball. Uh, it's also, uh, it, it wasn't bid because it's actually excluded from the bidding process due to emergency, but it's also addition to public infrastructure, so.
Thank you.
Recommend approval.
Thank you.
I'm good. I would recommend that we approve the contract with Allied Systems for the air HVAC cooling tower at a cost of forty-four thousand, seven, seventy-two.
Thank you. Is that a motion?
It is.
It is. I will second that. Um, anything else to add, Commissioner Bauer? Okay, hearing nothing, all those in favor, ratifying this contract, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Number, new business number two is a request by our Children and Youth Services for an addendum for Merkey PA. Uh, this is room and board cost for therapeutic foster care from July one, twenty twenty-four through June thirty, twenty twenty-five at a rate of fifty-six dollars and ten cents per day. Um, our children and youth utilizes many different, um, providers of many different services. So, um, Merkey is placement provider. Um, this is an amended contract for rate changes, mostly for programs that we don't use and also for therapeutic foster home rate where we will pay the room and board for a child for fifty-six, ten a day. Um. So this is just adding another one to our stable of providers. I believe Solicitor Brown has reviewed this addendum. All good?
Yep.
So anything else to add, gentlemen? Hearing nothing, with their motion to approve the Merkey?
So moved, second.
They have a motion in second, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye, aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. New business number three is also for Children and Youth Services. Um, this is a request for a new contract with Mentha Psychological LLC from July one, twenty twenty-four through June thirty, twenty twenty-five for court ordered mental health evaluations. If you notice the date of this contract, it's July one, twenty twenty-four. Um, that's not a typo. Sometimes when we need new service providers, uh, we'll go out and find them. Um, and their, uh, fiscal year runs from July one, twenty twenty-four through June thirty, twenty twenty-five, but we need them now, so we are signing contract with that date. Again, um. Mentha Psychological is a psychiatrist who performed a, who already performed a court ordered mental health evaluation for one of our families. So, uh, we needed to use their services, so as such, now we're going to ratify this contract.
All is good.
All is good?
Motion to approve Mentha Psychological, second.
Motion in second, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye, aye.
Thank you, motion carries. New business number four is a request by our Treasurer for a new contract with Fairfield Computer Services LLC for use of an online dog, online dog licensing system. The initial term is for two years, beginning August one, twenty twenty-five, and automatically renewable for three successive one-year terms. Cost for setup and training is eleven hundred dollars and use of system and support is one hundred and ten dollars a month. No charge for the initial six months of the contract. So this morning, we have our Treasurer, Matt Frye, in the room. Matt, would you care to elaborate on this? Thank you.
The current system that we use to track the software has been outdated since early two thousands. And the software to track the dogs is separate from what we use to track everything else. So we have our online system with epaygov, epaynow, however they write their contract out. That system is not user friendly. There's probably twenty to twenty-five different options on there to try to get where you want to go. But it doesn't always leave where you think it's supposed to go. So it's difficult to go and find the information that you need. This new system would combine all of our dog licensing as well as our small games of chance and the rest of the state license fee funds excluding hunting fish. Hunting fish has their own separate system online, they do. So the new system would have all of the dog licensing software as well as small games of chance, bingo, special raffles, pistol permits. All of that together in one, one encapsulating system where we can go in and we can update things as we needed. We can reprint these certificates, they're all saved in templates. We won't have to go use the old certificate books and track it on paper. Everything will all be recorded automatically. If there's an error, we can go in and fix it, reissue the license and then get that to the people that need it.
Thank you. So in essence, you're updating your technology in your office. So for those of you who don't know, students, um, our Treasurer's Office also sells dog licenses, small games of chance licenses, hunting and fishing licenses, anything else?
There are, we call it a pistol permit, but it's a. It's similar to a concealed carry, but it's an open carry. For when you go hunting, you have a permit to go and carry another firearm with you for protection. Typically, you couldn't hunt with a revolver except for certain cases. But so you have, like, when you go out to the woods, there's paywholes around. It's better to have a sidearm on you rather than a rifle just for your protection in case something were to happen. So that's an option that they have.
So. So in addition to overseeing our fifty-some checking accounts here at the county, uh, you sell these permits. How many, how much of your traffic is the permit sales between the dog licenses and?
Dog licenses, I believe we did about twenty-three hundred annual licenses last year and we average around four hundred lifetime licenses per year. And we get a, for each annual license, we get a commission of one dollar plus whatever the current cost of postage is. And that'll vary depending on the year, but once the update in twenty twenty-five for December first, they're going to update and raise the cost two dollars. And then again, in December first, twenty twenty-seven, it raises up another dollar. We're waiting to hear back and see if that reflects an initial commission to us on what we receive for suddenly licenses. But for dog licenses, we have twenty-three hundred a year for annual, five, four hundred for lifetime. We're seeing a transition of more lifetime than annual, which is good because people are keeping their dogs long. They're not surrendering them to needs assignments like that, but keeping the dogs that they have. And it's easier on them than trying to remember every year, oh, I have to go out and renew my license, pay the one-time fee and it's fifty-two, seventy for the lifetime or right now eight, seventy for the annual. So after six years, you've more than made your money back and you're saving money in the long run.
Right.
We have, on average, about a hundred and five small games of chance licenses. And combined with all that excluding hunting fish with commissions, we bring in about twenty thousand dollars a year.
Great. So, um, county has mandated partner with the state to sell these dog licenses and small games of chance to the LCB. We don't make a lot of money doing that. We get a very small commission. Um, so it's not a revenue generator for the county. So the new software is going to cost some, some money, okay? So this is a mid-year change, okay? Our departments, um, as commissioners, we have the responsibility to approve, uh, spending funds. So because this is a mid-year change, it was not previously budgeted for in the year twenty twenty-five budget. But we're lucky here in this case that no funds will be due till, uh, twenty twenty-six, so.
Right, I was able to work with the software provider and they agreed to bill the cost of setup and these training fees after the six months have been completed. So that pushes, pushes up to the end of February of twenty twenty-six.
Good job, good job. Any other questions, comments? Look for a motion to approve. I'll make that motion.
Second.
Motion in second, all those in favor approving the, um, new contract with Fairfield Computer Services LLC for online dog licensing system signify by saying aye. Thank you, okay. We have a request by our Veterans Affairs Department for approval of three veteran burials, two with the widow burials and one veteran's headstone. So here at the county, we also have a Veterans Affairs Office. Um, we have two gentlemen in that office that do a outstanding job for us. Um, when one of our county veterans passes away, well, our VA office helps with any issue the veterans might have. But when one of them passes away, there's a stipend that the county must pay or is required to pay to the family. Uh, when a widow of a veteran passes away, there's a stipend due to the family for that. And also when they set the headstones, uh, the county is required to pay a stipend for that as well. So this month, we, we have three, um, three veteran burial requests, two widow burials and one veteran headstone. We typically have these almost every meeting, don't we, Marilyn?
Mm-hmm.
Um, so our Veterans Affairs folks do a wonderful job keeping up our veterans' services. Anything to add?
I don't think so. I mean, we have an, an, I think a higher than average number of veterans in our population that we would imperatively, our, so we have that to be proud of. But it also is, to your point, the reason why we generate so many of these, obviously, as our veterans pass on, we still have the responsibility to meet these obligations.
Correct, thank you. So I look for a motion to approve these. We have motion in second, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Motion carries, thank you. New business number six, application for allocation of county liquid fuel tax funds in the amount of seven thousand dollars each. We have two requests. Um, so when you buy gasoline, you pay the gas tax at the pump. So the state collects that and, um, eventually, uh, some funds get passed back through the counties. Uh, the state sends the counties, the state sends the funds to the county and we are responsible for allocating that among our eleven municipal, twelve municipalities. Um, so if they send us twelve hundred dollars, each municipality would get a hundred dollars. So, um, this year, it turns out the, um, allocation teaches seven thousand dollars. So we have a request by Highland Township for Old Lamont Road and Ogren Road surfacing and a request by Jayden Township for Tarrant Ship. So the state passes the money to us. Municipalities have to apply to PennDOT for their projects, PennDOT approves them. And then the municipality sends us the paperwork and we are then allowed to vote on it and distribute the funds. So hearing that, I look for a motion to approve the request by Highland Township and by Jayden Chip.
So moved, second.
Motion in second, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Any questions so far from anyone? Our, uh. Great. So next on our agenda is presentation. We are thrilled today to have, um, John Slim, Kate Brock, Chi Catalone, Jesse Schreiber and students from, we have folks from, uh, Dickinson, correct? Okay, and students from Saint Mary's High School. Um, uh, John sent me a list. We have Kate Brock, Sierra Heims, Chi Catalone, John Slim, Angie Catalone, Jesse Schreiber, Isaac Perlock, Vinnie Shafeski, Maya Washburn, Jack Heebler, Jaden Overly, Sam Recker, Caleb Fox, Rihanna Penfield and Traylon Ginther. Did I miss anybody? Okay, so I'm going to turn the program over. I know Traylon, you're the president of Dutch Manufacturing and John, I'll let you two take it from here. We're glad you're here.
So the nine-eight-eight coin was made to spread awareness to anyone that has experienced or gone through or known someone that has gone through suicide or any mental awareness situation. This is our third collaboration with John Slim, Dutch Manufacturing and the Community Education Center and our third collaboration with the Cameron Elk Suicide Prevention Task Force. And with the funding for this, it's a generous amount from the Dickinson Center and from the Act thirteen, thanks to you guys, the commissioners. And for this project, it was given to us in a kind of manner, but the thanks that we want to give to the generous generosity that all of you have given to us to expand on our project and to invite us into this meeting to share what we have became and shown with the product and what we've produced. And I'd love to also say it's the start of the Mental Health Awareness Month and so it would take off our spreading awareness to the nine-eight-eight coin.
Thank you, yes.
And I would only add that we did bring coins and artist statement for everyone who is here. So before you leave, uh, please make sure you get one of those. And since you mentioned Veterans Affairs, we're actually going to swing by there after we're done with this meeting because Vinnie here, his dad is the director of the program and, and yeah.
Richard, is that you?
Yes. I heard you didn't give your dad a coin though.
That, that is not true. Um, and Vinnie, would you just take a, a few minutes to share? Like he shares us in each of the assemblies that we have and talks about his experience with his dad and Veterans Affairs. Will you could share that with the group?
Oh, fine. How are you off it really? I know my dad, he served two tours in Iraq. He's been there a lot and I was job shining one time. And I seen like how hard it truly is to get veterans the money they need. It's a really long process. And I know veterans really suffer from depression and all that. So it's like a really big thing, I think, that we have to touch on. Veterans, no one, like people know about, they don't, they really overlook the mental health aspect of it.
Right, that's a big deal. So, Vinnie, we're, we're thrilled that your dad is here. And if I might share a little bit, Vinnie's father, um, came to us from, was he the CO or the sheriff?
CO.
So he worked in our Elk County Jail, okay? Um, then we had an opening for a Veterans Affairs Director. And even though he really didn't have much, like, office experience or, um, sitting on this side of the desk, he said, when, when he was interviewed, he said he really felt it, it in his heart to help other veterans. So, and he gives that impression to everybody that he helps. So we're really lucky to have him here. We appreciate that. So thanks for speaking up for him.
And I would just wrap it up with saying to give you a clue of how widespread, so there's thirty thousand coins that were produced. And, uh, so we're in the midst of the nine-eight-eight coin tour. It's, there are about two dozen stops. So to just give you an idea, we just came from Elk County Catholic where we did an amazing assembly with both middle school and high school students. After we leave all of you, we will swing by the Veterans Affairs Office. Uh, and then we're actually headed to Fox Township Senior Center and then Bennett Valley Senior Center um, to distribute coins and, and visit the folks there. So that gives you like a, a small snippet of, uh, where this coin is going. And yesterday, we were at the Cameron County High School, um, so it's far and wide. So thank you for having us.
Sure, Dutch Manufacturing Program is just, we're blessed to have that in Elk County. So I'll just read this last, um, paragraph, tells about the collaboration for the nine-eight-eight coin. Manufactured by, by Metco Industries, the nine-eight-eight coin was made possible by generous funding from Act thirteen grant from the Elk County Commissioners, Dickinson Center Incorporated's Signs of Suicide Prevention Program. Likewise, Gerg Tool and Die made the tools for the project. Ion Technologies did the coding and Leadership Elk and Cameron helped with distribution. So community project, so thank you.
And as the artist, I guess, John, you probably had some input as well. But do you want to describe a little bit about what, what is on the coin and the significance of the, of the artwork?
Yeah, well, you know, I'm only one of about three dozen artists on this project and I'm going to actually toss it over. Do you want to, you want to take the design of the coin and talk a little bit about it or? You want to talk a little bit about what's on the coin?
Um, I need to picture.
It's right, right there. And I think one of the interesting things to note on the nine-eight-eight coins, every detail on their coin has a meaning, so I think that's really cool.
Yeah, and I think they all have the artist statement, it appears.
We do.
Around the table, but I'm not sure he does, it's right here. If he doesn't have one, we can get one. Uh, on the top of it, you'll see that you can, you see the design of the coin. All right, go ahead and explain about it.
So, um, at every bottom of the brain, there is a semicolon. Kind of like, um, in your English class, some, a semicolon means a pause in a sentence, but it, it's not the end. The sentence still continues. And there are eleven little, um, notches, which is for eleven minutes that someone takes a life. And the hands are, um, hold the brains and someone's always there to help you and to help you, um, lift up your hard times.
Yeah, and this was a project that was started first week of this school year in September and, um, every week, uh, we worked on it and here we are.
Great, great. Any other questions or comments for our guests?
The only final thing I'd like to say if I could is, as Traylon had said, that A is, uh, Mental Health Awareness Month. And what I didn't realize until I looked into this is that the annual observance was founded by the Mental Health of America in nineteen forty-nine. So we think about maybe the attention to mental health being a rather new, uh, experience. But in fact, I think what it's showing is that it's been here for a while, but doing things that what you've been able to do is, is drawing more attention to the, to the need to focus on this and to address those issues because, you know, what did they say, one in five? I have it here somewhere. Um, one in five US adults experience mental illness each year. So I mean, this is not, this is not a new problem, but it's a problem that largely goes unnoticed. And what this is doing and the work that you're doing is bringing this out of the shadows so that people that need help know where to go and can get the help that they need. Thank you for that.
And just a fun fact, two thousand pounds of gutter metal went into the creation of the thirty thousand. And, uh, if any of you are wondering, had fun seeing what else weighs two thousand pounds? And we, the, the one that we liked the most was five hundred pounds. Which we really wanted to bring along with us, but.
Five hundred.
Yeah, two thousand pounds. I don't have it in our area.
So the students know as well, I don't know if you guys know, but all together with their nine-eight-eight coin tour just with the students of Elk County, they've reached two thousand students.
That's great. Anything else from Dickinson?
No, I mean, we're just grateful to be part of this opportunity. We do the Signs of Suicide Program in the district. Every year, we've been doing that for eighteen school years. Um, but this is kind of an extra opportunity for us to go in. Typically annually, we see a thousand students. So this year, we got to double that and some of those students even heard our message strike. So we're just really grateful to be part of the opportunity.
That's great. And Chi, anything from you?
I'd just like to say how proud I am of these kids. They put so much compassion into designing the coins and will were thoughtful and intentional about everything in my own coins. It's a wonderful experience for me to be a part of this with them.
Okay, anything from Leadership?
Yeah, so, um, thank you, Commissioner Lecker. Uh, so it, it is truly, as Mr. Creasenberg said, a, a community project because, um, we need help, the task force needs to help getting these coins out. And what are you going to do with thirty thousand coins? You know, we can give two thousand out to the schools, we still have twenty-eight thousand. So the Leadership Elk and Cameron, uh, Program has a small, uh, project group. They do a community improvement project. And so one of our small project groups this year from the program decided they wanted to help with the nine-eight-eight awareness campaign with the Suicide Prevention Task Force and also deploying the coins. Um, so the Leadership Elk and Cameron Project Group is, uh, dropping coins off at all of the healthcare facilities, doctors' offices, ER, med, um, Q Care, pharmacies, um, you name it, specialty doctors. And also they're hosting a, um, healthcare and social services workers appreciation night at Strawberry on May twenty-first. So I'm going to make sure, um, you know, those departments, um, within, within the county get those invitations as well. Um, and really just inviting healthcare, social service workers who feel probably underappreciated every day um, to just come out to the brewery, um, and, um, feel appreciated and we'll give out more coins and the task force will be there just for the table, um, to, to give out more information and more points.
Great, wonderful. Then last, anything from the school? Thank you for your.
Thank you for the invitation. Uh, this is a great learning experience for our kids as well as myself. Um, we've had Dutch Manufacturing, third year. Uh, we've had two years doing, in collaboration with John and Kate and, and great collaboration this year with Chi, just to kind of, uh, broaden our horizons a little bit. Um, it's been great for Dutch Manufacturing, just to get our name out there. We've been out to the schools with a smile.
Um, it's been great for Dutch manufacturing, just to get our name out there. We've been out to the schools with a smile coin, with the nine eight eight. They just really have that community partnership just to see how kind of the other world works. Not so much in, inside that school, inside that school room, but, but how the other world works. So thank you for the invitation and thanks for all these people.
That, that's great. And we do have, we will be talking about Dutch manufacturing in a few more minutes also, but for now we'll move ahead with our agenda. So under correspondence, we do have a few correspondence there. It's available in the commissioner's office for further review of anyone who's interested. Uh, we'll move on to the good of the county. First we'll have Calvin from our I T department. Tell us about the update on our website.
Yeah. So our new website just went live. Um, we are within the first month of it. It looks great. Uh, Jordan Lightner from Red Porch A and C is able to take our old website and revamp it and give it a new look. Um, I know we've had a few questions on videos, so we have switched to using YouTube, uh, to present the videos to the public. There's many reasons why we did so. One of them was being, uh, the previous way we would do it is we'd upload it to Google Drive. It was a free service up until you hit the limit of how much you can store in the cloud. Um, and then it was a monthly cost that I would pay out of my budget just to continue that service. Um, YouTube's free. Uh, it's easier to access the videos anywhere. You can do it mobile, tablet, you know, computer. Um, and another thing is there's closed captioning. Um, so our new website is ADA compliant. The state is really pushing that. They will actually look at your website and if you have, you know, bad colors to the website, it's, you know, for colorblind people, you need to make corrections. Um, and so one of them was closed captioning for people that are hard of hearing. Um, another good thing about it is all videos are stored in one place now. So if you get on the YouTube channel and you want to view the commissioner video, you can also see the prison board meetings and everything else that we record. Um, it does not require you to bounce back and forth between the website. Everything is readily available all in one place. It's a lot easier doing it that way too. Um, you can customize it a lot better rather than just upload it and then it's just a video. Um, like I said, the closed captioning, um, and so far it's been, it's been really, really good experience for both Steve and I, um, learning the process.
Great. So on YouTube, will the old, um, archived, um, recorded meetings be on there or will they have to go back to the website for those?
They're still on the website. They're still just in the Google Drive. They still all work. Uh, just going from the last commission video forward, it will be on YouTube.
Great.
And then can you, uh, can you access it through YouTube? Directly through YouTube by doing a search or do you have to go through the website, our website?
Nope. You can go on YouTube and you can just look up, uh, Elk County, Pennsylvania, and then it'll show up as a channel. You view the channel and then it has all the videos and then I have them in playlists. So you can just view, you know, salary board, you can do prison commissioners. They're all broken up. So they're easy to, to find.
Great. Thanks, Calvin. So under good of the county, also we welcome and encourage the public to attend our meetings. We like it when we have people in the room show what we do. Um, next item is congratulations to the Saint Mary's Rotary Club, District, District seven, three, six, oh, who are celebrating their seventy fifty year of, uh, service this year. So that's, that's great. Um, next is, May fifteenth is a peace officers memorial day service. A blue mask will be celebrated at eleven A M. at the Holy Rosary Church in Johnsonburg. And we have our sheriff Todd Calderon here. Sheriff, would you like to add anything to that?
Yes. Thank you, uh, Commissioner Lecker and as well Commissioner Queensberry, Commissioner Cabarr, for the invitation to say a few words about this. So peace officers memorial day was signed into public law by President John Kennedy on October the first nineteen sixty two, designating May fifteenth of each year as peace officers memorial day to honor the men and women, peace officers, who while serving in either federal, state, municipal, county or tribal organizations that lost their lives or were disabled in line of duty. Uh, our area is served by fraternal war police block, Pelo Lodge ninety six. We, we especially in addition to the, all this, uh, who lost their lives across the country, we especially honor two of our own who were killed by felonious assault. Uh, one was Chief Carl Whipple, who in January seventeenth nineteen eighty four, while police stationed on Mark Street in Johnsonburg, was killed when a twenty-two-year-old man entered the police station with a shotgun, opened fire on him and striking him in the chest. Uh, there was an officer, another officer there who was able to return fire, uh, stopping the assailant who was currently serving a life sentence for that crime. And then on October twentieth nineteen ninety nine, Officer Steve German Lucane lost his life in the early morning hours of that date. While he conducted a traffic stop on a vehicle for speeding and tailgating, we also found out that that driver, that vehicle was, uh, the influence of the alcohol. Uh, there was an eighteen-year-old driver who produced a nine millimeter caliber pistol and, um, shot, uh, Officer German in the chest. And as Officer German fell to the ground, he was able to open fire, strike into assailant, seriously wounding him. He was convicted of third degree murder and he is currently serving a twenty-two to forty-seven year life sentence. We also, uh, pay honor and tribute to Sergeant David Destrola who lost his life on December twenty-third nineteen eighty-nine from our sister lodge, Shane Handy Lodge in Bradford City. He was investigating a, a traffic accident on a two nineteen bypass. When the vehicle lost control, uh, he tried to get out of the way and fell over the overpass and was killed. So, uh, each year, uh, we, uh, we, we conduct a ceremony, we, we move it around. And as you said, this year is at the Holy Rosary Church, Holy Rosary Church in Johnsonburg and a lunch will follow. So appreciate the, the opportunity to make some comments. Um, public is invited to that lunch and following the service. Uh, we plan for a certain amount of people, but if there's any groups that plan on attending, we'll just ask them to call me in sheriff's office so that we can plan appropriately.
Thank you. And it's a, it's a very moving and impressive ceremony. So it occurred to everyone to attend. Uh, next we have the America two fifty P A Liberty Bell. It's currently at Saint Leo's School. This is our last school building. So we're kind of excited, but kind of sad about that. The bell has been a very exciting, uh, project. And we plan on taking it in every parade we're in between now and November, um, when it will be installed on the courthouse lawn. So, um, it's going to go to our libraries next and our homeschooler, children in the county will be coming here to this building to splash it. So it's been a great project. So then our next partnership with Dutch manufacturing. John, would you like to speak about that?
Sure.
For America two fifty P A.
Yeah. So as part of, uh, the two hundred and fiftieth birthday of our, of America next year, uh, Dutch manufacturing, community education council, myself, we've already started our fourth and fifth projects for that. Um, one is going to be the U S flag coin, uh, which we have been working on designing since January and there will probably be about thirty thousand of those, which will be released next year. And the other project that we are super, super excited about is we are creating the world's largest powdered metal U S flag. Um, and so that is quite an undertaking, um, which is really going to put on display how genius my co-artists are here. Um, you know, Traylon, do you want to, so Traylon's doing all the drafting and, and the clock is ticking because she's graduating in a few weeks. So I'm, I'm sure she'll, uh, still share her talents with us. But talk a little bit about just the snippet of drafting the world's largest.
So the drafting of it, it definitely is going to, it has a long process to it because of how big it is being made and produced. There's so many different parts that have to be engraved or just cut out into this huge piece of metal that is on the screen. And through the program Solid Edge, which is our three D program at school, it shows it's smaller than it is, but like the dimensions showing how big it is in real life is definitely going to be a grand process that will be extraordinary to witness.
And just give them a hint of how, so it's going to be silver and it's in powdered metal, obviously. Tell them how we are doing the red stripes because obviously we're not having color. And the commissioners were a part of this.
So for the registers, we decided to all write our, in our handwriting, America on a piece of paper with also D M two fifty and all those into it. And then we took that and we're putting it on the red strips to make it textured. So it gives us a different detailing. So it shows the signature of like the red and the white, but also showing how we're incorporated into the flag.
And just really quickly give them, so they get an idea of how time and that, like how that painstakingly, uh, you have had to work on this. How long does it take you to? Like I thought she would just, here's the paper we all signed, America, including the commissioners. It'd be scanned in and then the top punch would be created. Not so.
So for how big it is, it actually like overwhelms the memory of the computers and it links the glitch every time I place all of us in that once. So for putting all of the words and stuff all together, it takes, we only have one stripe in support and it took two weeks just to get that one stripe. The red for how bad the memory is.
And also we're quickly going to go down to Jack because we have another master drafter in here. So he's taking the lead on drafting the U S flag coin that will be going out. So do you want to talk a little bit about doing that?
Sure. So I've been the head drafter for the America two fifty coin since January. And we've been working, I've been working on it like probably three days out of the week, every week since January, just like, because we'd meet with John on Fridays. He'd give me ideas or what to do. I would draft a little.
We all would.
Make some changes and then make like the more major changes the following days. And then we just went through that process until now we have a finished, a finished draft that I got to mention and now we're sending it out to, to manufacturer.
And that's all we can say until it's revealed.
Can't wait, can't wait. So is the flag going to be four by eight foot? Is that what we ended up on?
Um, it's maybe four by six.
Four by six.
About the size of a chalkboard in a classroom.
Okay.
And it's going to be mobile, so it can travel.
Right.
Uh, which was, uh, you know, a really great idea that actually Matt was, uh, no, Harley Ramsey. Harley Ramsey, our superintendent, he was the one that's, because I had visions of putting this on a wall on the school. And he's like, it'll bring down the whole wall. He's like, why not make it mobile? So yeah, credit, uh, to Harley, who's just been so fantastic. Um, he gave us the idea to make it mobile. So it will not only be able to travel around the county, but we envision sending it out to conferences and to county fairs and anyone else, you know, maybe Washington will call and want to, want to borrow it. So, and the commissioner's office will be working with us on that, to be honest.
Definitely, definitely. So Dutch manufacturing, are, are you all the, the totality of the students in that program?
No.
Okay. I didn't think so. How many of you are seniors? Just Traylon? Okay. Traylon, I know you've been there since day one, so they, they will definitely miss you. Sounds like, uh, Jake is your name?
Yeah.
Jack, I was close. Uh, so you're the up and coming, uh, next super draft month of.
Yeah, there are thirty-four altogether.
Okay. I thought there were a bunch.
Um, and hopefully even more next year. And in fact, one of the students, Sam Rettger, uh, goes to Elk Catholic and he comes out for Dutch manufacturing, which is, you're allowed to do that. And I actually think this morning we get, Sam gave a pretty good pitch. I think we'd like to get more students. They'll still go to Elk Christian, but they can come out for Dutch manufacturing. So it's a really nice, um, exchange.
That's great. That's great. Good. Thank you. Okay. Moving on. Please continue to pray for our military personnel, our families and our children, their teachers, all elected officials and peace in the world. Marilyn, questions from the press?
Not today.
Thank you. Any comments from taxpayers? Okay. Hearing none. Look for motion to adjourn. Meeting adjourned. Thank you. So I think we want to follow with. So where would we go? Outside on the steps or? Yeah. What do you think?